All right, I have 6:32 PM and so we're just a couple minutes late getting started on this, on July 11th, 2017 with the regular city council meetings. And having called this order, and I am now calling it the order, if you would please stand for a brief invitation and pledge allegiance to the Constitution. Heavenly Father, we thank you for everyone who's here today. We thank you, Lord, that they're interested in the City Government Board. And we pray, we ask you, Lord, for your grace and for your wisdom, so that we can do what is right in this meeting, and do what's right in your sight. In Christ's precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Now, we have Citizens Communications Day. And first, this is Jody Fox.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel. I'm here as the Economic Director tonight, just I'm pleased to be able to announce to you that we have a new project, that we have brought Van Alstine. We have a turbo, a similar manufacturer that has purchaseability and will be operating as soon as they can with their CEO. So it's looking at this process. We've been working, I've been working with this project since I started with the EDC, and we've certainly had our ups and downs with it, and hurdles, but we stuck with it. And some of the council knows some of the issues, and some of you don't. But anyway, I'm thankful to be here tonight, and just want to let you know, it's the never the companies' performance, and they will be assembling turbocharged parts that are aftermarket parts, or price parts. And they will be employing 16 people. It'll be live industrial, but bringing new jobs, and Van Alstine's going to be over for us tonight.
And next, Mr. Hill, please.
I'm gonna read you first something from the council agenda. As you can all see, under item 12, I think, no, see, item number 11 this week, Mayor and Council Closing Comments, which ran to section 551.0415 of the Texas Government Code. City of Council may report on the following items. One, expression of thanks, congratulations, or condolences. Two, information about holiday schedules. Three, recognition of individuals. Four, reminders of about upcoming city events. Five, information only community events. And six, announcements involving an imminent threat to public health and safety. If you were here at last council meetings, you'd know that this law was not followed. Everybody on the council should know what they can speak about at the end of the day. The reason why you want that to be that way is because you could create an item on the agenda that's not really on the agenda for people to have to discuss. And there's no discussion for it. It's just a statement by a council person, that they can pass out information, and that's illegal. That's wrong. I would have thought that somebody within the body of either the mayor, or the city council, or the, you know, other attendees would have mentioned that that was the wrong thing to do. The reason I know about this is because I did it once. When I was on the, I was very new on the council, I made that as a good time to make a speech about something. They let me get through all the way through it, too. So I shouldn't have been allowed to, but then, the next week, I came back, I mean, next month, I came back and apologized for doing it, because I didn't realize where I was going wrong. Okay, I just wanted you to know that, and I hope that I'll hear about something good happening.
All right, now we'll move on to, uh...
Sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. I was talking to this at my end. Is it okay if I, I can turn it in right now? I was wearing my mask and didn't turn in my...
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm so worried, I think I need to say, I was in a little front row. I was here last week, or last month, sorry, I made the same mistake on me. And I just was here, I heard some things, and I just, you know, I'm a little confused, because I hear, you know, we're worried about fees, and we're worried about this, and then I was sitting there, and I was hearing, you know, we need a bulletin board like Austin, and we need an AD, and we need this, and we need that. And so I guess I'm really kind of confused, and I don't know where going, because we're talking about, we don't have budgets to do our streets, and that's what's most important. But then we're kind of talking about spending all this money that I'm not sure we actually have the money for, but where it's gonna come from. And I did research, and our budget compared to Austin's budget is minuscule, a drop in the bucket. And they do have a full-time person that does nothing but monitor their bulletin board for their city. I don't think that that's something that Van Alstine's writing for, and I don't think it's a smart way to use our money. I mean, we, our budget, just like anybody else, if you, all your families have budgets, if you want to buy a new car, you either have to work extra hours, or you're gonna have to give up something. So if we want to go buy and do things, I think we need to be very responsible in how we spend our money. And it's not just our, it's not just your money if you're doing it, it's all of our money. So that was one of the things that kind of concerned me. And then, um, I was just kind of concerned, because there were some things that were said that I think need to be clarified, because it was said that, you know, city managers don't sit at the table. Well, actually, I went and did some research, and I went to several websites, I went to Texas City Management, and some other ones. With a form of government that we have, we, they are normally considered part of the city council, they do normally sit at the front, and then the departments that offer the heat departments are considered an uncommitted city manager. So that was a statement that was said by one of the city council members, that they go to all these city council members, and the city manager's never there. I'd be really interested in knowing what cities they are, and what form of government they are, because we are a different form of government than some of the other cities around here. And I can understand why people would be confused by that. But I think as a person sitting up there, I kind of agree with Billy, is that y'all ran for that, and you need to take on the responsibility of knowing what is and isn't. And if you sit out there and make a comment, I think that it really needs to be somewhat based in fact. I don't think it needs to just be something that comes out of the air, that you have a feeling, or you're upset about something, so you're gonna say something. It really needs to be researched, because people watching these videos hold you to our standard. Whether you should be or not, they do. You were elected, to you, to them, you are a person of knowledge, and of honor, and you're sitting there taking on it. So you really need to, when you say something, you need to back it up. You can't just say something, because that's your feeling. And the other thing is, is kindness, you know. I left here, and I think, you know, I had a very attached thing of, I, let's say, you know, it's a hat built in the voice here, there's people that don't like each other. And we, in the center of it, are the ones who are getting maimed, and ill, and hurt by it, and I don't mean that to literally, okay, so nobody, as I already had to make, I mean it as, we're losing businesses. People, I talk to people, and they're like, you're from Van Alstine? Oh, yeah, I'll be here, is that one of the newspapers? You know, the newspaper, I hope, will follow up on the stories, because I think it gets a salacious headline, and then the true facts of what's happening, and what's going on, are never repeated. So they have the one headline, and this is wrong. We all hear, I think that there's, both sides could have done better. You know, Ms. Clom, when her, her report came back, she should have been notified. She shouldn't have to call City Hall to come and get it. But we're all human. I'm human, I make mistakes, y'all are human, you make mistakes. If we keep poking out eyes, everybody in the city's gonna be fine. Okay? And another thing that I have, and then I'll shut up, is this sounds like, you know, I went around downtown, and everybody wants to stay downtown. Believe me, I love downtown, I think it makes Van Alstine very, very unique, I love it, I really do. But let's also understand that we do have problems with it. You know, you go downtown, that's like, oh, and ask them, you know, football people, and the thing, do you like football? Yeah, they're already there. Do people love downtown? Sure, because they're there. We also have merchants outside of the central business district, and we do have issues with growth. I absolutely love that we have a vibrant senior center system. I love it. There's people down there, they're active, they're doing stuff. Let's also know that, you know, I've heard people that can't find parking when they're trying to go to the government center, when they're doing activities there, because there's no parking. I love we have it, but I think we do have to look forward to future. I wasn't here, I can't comment about the government center, I have no idea. But we are, we're running out. I mean, I've tried getting down there, there's people getting out, and the streets walk, I love it that we're having that. But we are gonna have to look to future. Growth is coming. Anyway, I just hope that everybody take a deep breath, take their feelings out of it, and actually do what's best for the city. Everybody take a deep breath, we are all human, we all live in this city, we've all gotta get along, and let's do what's best for the city. Get off of personal things, and do what's best for the city. Anyway, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Did you have that card over here?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I just, I didn't turn it in. I'm sorry, I got to talk to the very best...
And so we're done with Citizens Communications. There was an item number five on here, and it was a public hearing, but we are not going to have that. We had a problem with the notice on that, so we're not going to have that public hearing tonight. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Item number six is considering taking, well, let me inform you first before...
Mayor, I'd like to remove the regular meeting on the consent agenda. I want to make sure we remove, or whatever, I want to have a discussion on the regular meeting.
Which items?
Number six.
Okay. Any council member can have an item removed from the consent agenda, put on the regular agenda if they're lying, if they think that they need more discussion. So that leads us to number seven. Considering taking any action necessary regarding duty pistol trade for the Van Alstine Police Department GT distributors. And so, yes? I'd like to motion to approve it. All right, we have a motion to approve it, and a second, all in favor. Okay, it is unanimous, and so that passes. Now we're going to move on to the regular agenda, and back then to item number six.
Mayor, I think we can do the zoning board adjustment, and that's, number six is lumped together. Does that mean we remove all of six off there, or do you want to just do the consent agenda on this zoning board adjustment?
This is a short item.
Yeah, it was two, the zoning board adjustment meeting, and the regular meeting, it's actually the regular meeting.
Okay.
Minutes.
First, you don't approve of the...
I have questions, so I think I needed to remove it off the consent agenda.
All right.
You can still leave it as one item, and then discuss your question, and then have one motion for the whole item.
All right, and so we had no consent agenda. Item number, well, pardon, I'm not gonna send it up. Go ahead.
Okay, so on the meeting minutes, and I'm only talking about the city council meeting minutes, on the open meeting section, item number 24, I'm trying to go back through the, I'm talking about the Teddy Ann, Robert, and myself opposing the motion. I tried to go back to the meeting minutes, the way I removed it was, activists didn't vote, so I don't think it was captured, but we said no, unless a not voting people's a no vote.
Which item?
Number 24, when we came back from full session, the voting says that we were opposed, I think we did not vote at all. It just failed, because it didn't have a poll. But I looked at the video, and it doesn't have video of when we came back, from what I could tell.
All right, does anyone else recall, I thought we did take a vote. Am I mistaken?
I thought it just no votes, we voted.
From what I remember, the motion was made, a vote was cast, and there was no counter motion, or anything like that, it just, the motion died because of lack of...
Three to two.
No, this was, it was a motion with two people opposed, or two people for, and then it just died for that. It seemed to be...
I said, I mean, there was a...
There was a...
I said, yes. Well, there was a vote.
So was it, was a vote?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was saying, I went back to the video, and I couldn't find anything, and I thought we just did...
Yeah, there was no other motion made, so it was...
Okay.
That was it.
Okay, great. Then I stand apart.
Likewise, we, the same item that was in the public hearing, has been removed from the regular agenda, too, once again, for the same reason, the notice was lost. Actually, there was, there was an error, so we're going to just skip over that and pick it up at a later date. And so we're ready to move on to departmental reports.
Can we make a motion on number six?
What's that?
We need to make a motion on number six.
Oh, all right, okay, you're right. Pardon me. Okay, so now that we, I think we're squared away on the minutes. As to item number six, is there a motion to approve the minutes for, from the June 13th to 2017 zoning board adjustment, and the meeting from June 13th to 2017, the regular?
I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes, both set. We have a second, all in favor. All right, it is unanimous, and so number six is approved. All right, now, we're going to move on to departmental reports. Frank, you want to go ahead?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. We got the fire department report for last month. Anna requested PMS once, Gunner 11 times, Howe 21, Sherman requested us zero, Tom Bean requested us once, Van Alstine, we had 53 calls inside and out in the community. We called for a helicopter twice, there were 27 non-transports, and now the total 58 transports, and then no patient found in 12, and we requested mutual aid five times. A total of 87 emergency calls were made, and 17 non-emergency calls, for a total of 104 calls for service. And we had 22 fires, inside and outside the community. And Jennifer will give you the administrative report.
For the administrative department, for the month of June, we answered 1,432 calls in 22 operating days, received 14 Public Information Act requests, we accepted one variance petition, one annexation petition for 16.27 acres, a zoning petition for 45.63 acre tract, a zoning petition for an 8.63 acre tract, a preliminary plat for 32.8 acre tract, a zoning petition for 0.03 acre tract, a final plat, and it is, well, it's a one final plat for administrative approval on a 10 acre plat. We received 38 hours of training, and for commercial permits, we accepted three commercial permit applications for mechanical, electrical, sign, or demolition. We issued one commercial permit application for mechanical, electrical, sign, or demolition. We accepted, and therefore issued, zero certificate of occupancies. We accepted 68 residential permits, and issued 67. So far in July, we have accepted one commercial permit and two residential permits. For utility billing, we accepted and entered 64 new utility accounts, and nine utility account dispositions. We processed 67 purchase orders, and issued 63 general fund checks, 54 water fund checks, one core technology fund check, two S&amp;N Enterprises checks, five insurance trust fund checks, and one public works capital outlay check, for a total of 126 checks.
Mayor and Counsel, police department had 38 hours of training this month, we had 52 incidents, 903 calls for service, communication, answered 149 901 calls, dispatched 1,012 calls for service, had 23 hours of training, phone calls non-emergency received was 3,530, records request processed was 27, municipal courts had closed 269 cases. I'd also like to introduce our new officer, Mary Ann Jones, and perhaps her daughter, who the name of the... Very happy to have Mary Ann with us. She comes from us from the gang, she does a great job.
Chief Barnes, in our agenda, we mentioned the handgun swap.
Yes.
Weapon swap. And from what, from my reading, it sounds like you made a pretty good deal. What, do you recall the details or any of them?
Well, the current duty guns that we have are over 15 years old, so we're able to take those, along with some weapons that have been either seized, or donated to the department, and actually be able to provide new handguns to the officers at no expense, with like a $600 credit for other equipment that we can purchase. So these guns will go back into a firearms distributor, some of the old guns may be taken apart, I'm not sure what they do, but some other agency may purchase them, I'm not, you know, but it's a good, it's a good program, most agencies do it, and it's no cost to the citizens, and gives the officer a dependable weapon.
You made a good deal. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Chief. Director Kinsley?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. We kicked off our summer reading programs in June, these statistics are reflective of that. Our door count went up 100 people to 2,137. Attendance at our summer reading events held here at the community center drew 396 children and 183 adults. For our usual storytimes on Mondays and Wednesdays, we had 120 children and 65 adults for June. Almost twice as many people as last month signed up for library cards, with a total of 77 new patrons. Friends of the library met on June 1st, with 17 members in attendance. On June 3rd, the library hosted a nonfiction author, Janice Tracy, for a meet the author event. Let's see, on June 4th, members of the Van Alstine Library Board hosted a volunteer appreciation dinner, to thank the many volunteers and friends of the library that have worked so hard the past two years to achieve the many improvements at the library. We performed a literacy outreach to the Grayson Crisis Center on Wednesday, June 14th. 16 children participated in the storytime, milked cookies, and received a free book. The Winding Road Book Club met 10 adults in attendance on June 19th, and we would like to thank the American Legion for their donation of $1,000, as well as sunflower thrift for donating $179 to the friends of the library, and to everybody that know that the young adult mural has furnished, and we invite everyone to please come see it this weekend.
Thank you. Director White?
Public Works Committee, I mean, Public Works Crew completed insulation of all the water meters at Blading. The city crews are in preparation to comply with TCQ testing of lead and water in the city of Van Alstine this month. City crews completed 46 meter checks, 44 meter installs, 31 rereads, completed three wastewater calls, where we cleaned over 500 feet of sewer main. The crews actually answered four animal control calls, and located the new, the old existing water line for the new elementary school for construction. The crews repaired five water leaks this month. Crews completed inspection, maintenance inspection of Georgetown Meadows roadway, valves, sewer, and manholes.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Lynn, do you have anything to mention?
We have received the Dallas Street Water and Sewer Replacement Contract back, the pre-bid meeting will be either late this week, or next week, we'll start construction on the Dallas Street water line replacement from Houston Street to Treeport. And then, next, next week, on the PNC agenda, will be the preliminary plat for the subdivision that goes around the, you know, elementary school, and based on the number of calls coming in from contractors, the elementary school is getting ready to plus it too, so we have a lot of good development.
Thank you, Lynn. That's the departmental reports.
All right, all good reports, thank you very much, everyone's working hard. Helen Frank, do you have a city manager's report?
Yes, sir, I do. Mayor and Counsel, city manager report for the month of June, received 1,656 emails, responded to 694, met with business prospect from Frisco, met with the library director, police director, chief police, public works director, and administrative director to go over budgets for their respective departments. Attended a meeting with commercial land brokers regarding in and around Van Alstine, met with several representatives from the community regarding different items that were of interest to them, met with several members of council, attended the CDC meeting, fire department had the hose, pump, and ladder compliance testing of the fire department equipment, and I could have easily been in the fire department report. Met with the developer regarding commercial tract, and attended the regional cooperation award with you over in the mid-cities. Let's see, attended the Texas City Manager Annual Conference, was interviewed by Legal, attended the Film Friendly Texas Training, and seen over another residential developer, and coordinated the 4th of July fireworks, which Kona Ice was a late submission, but they came out. And I participated, as well as Mary Jane helped coordinate Ashley Walker regarding her desire to sing the national anthem at our event, so it was a good, a good month. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, I want to thank our city staff for all their hard work. They work tremendously, they do a really great job for the city, and I hope everyone appreciates that, I'm sure you do. I want to add to what Mr. Place said, the design of these mayor and closing comments is by law. It's not arbitrary, it's not something we made up, just to make sure that things end in a, in a nice, pleasant fashion. It's the law. It's, these comments are pursuant to section 551.0415 of the Texas Government Code, and so that's the reason it's on there. I want to plug our newspaper, and of course, we all enjoyed it when Rodney was the editor. Still, it's a good newspaper, something I don't see a lot of our letters to the editor, and I'm pretty sure they will publish those for you, I think you may be restricted to 350 words. The deadline, I believe, is gonna be noon Tuesday, but you can, you can call the paper's editor to make sure about that. But it's, it's a forum that we don't use very often. I write occasionally for the paper, a couple times a month, maybe, and they're very good about publishing what I write, and I think they'll be good about publishing what you want to write, too. If it doesn't matter whether it's critical, or whether it's pound and back, whatever you feel like, whatever's important to you to write, I think we should use that newspaper. I think those kind of articles are gonna maybe even boost the sales, draw more interest from more, more of our citizens. So that's all I have to say, and I want to thank you once again for being here.
Would you like to add a comment on that? I'd like to thank Legal for spending a lot of time with us yesterday. It was an extremely long, but very fruitful meeting, as far as lots of education. Obviously, we should have been informed on how to do mayor and closing costs. Closing comments, we did not get that part, once again, we'll learn, but I wanted to say thank you for the time, it was extremely informative. Hopefully, we'll get that as some regular training for new folks. I did want to thank city staff, though. I went to a larger city's 4th of July fireworks, and Van Alstine kicked butt. We do a wonderful, wonderful job with our 4th of July fireworks, I really wanted to thank you there. They were just so much better than these other cities, and I wanted to tell you all, it was really, really, really nice.
I'm good. Okay?
I just want to make an announcement in the morning, at Grayson County South Campus, the Chamber is hosting a networking breakfast for anybody that wants to attend. Another plug for the Chamber on the 25th, two weeks from today, they're having music in the park, the boat arcs will be playing, and an event of rain, that will be at the Whistle Stop Cafe. We're over two so far, as far as rain. So hopefully, this one will get to be outside. And the third thing... And the third thing, uh, at the last meeting, uh, I recognize the small business owners of, uh, this community that were here, and I see a few of you now, and I would like y'all to stand, be recognized, and, uh, I wanna express my appreciation for y'all being here. Y'all just stand up for just a second. Everybody, thank you.
That's all, Greg, anything? All right, Will. Um, we're going to, uh, adjourn from our, uh, regular meeting minute, go into executive session, um, I'm, I'm gonna read the saving, the statement verbatim, as I should every single time. Executive session in accordance with chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code, open meetings law in parentheses, the city council may meet in a closed executive session pursuant to applicable laws. Item twelve, all items below for executive session pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code annotated subchapter five five one, the council will enter into executive session to discuss the following items, A, section five five one dot zero seven four, personnel matters in parentheses for eval- for annual evaluation of the city manager. B, section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney in parentheses regarding one, shared use path project, and two, city manager annual evaluation. Um, and, uh, after the, I don't know how long this, uh, executive session will take, Frank, are we gonna be able to use the conference room over there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, um, council's gonna move over into the, uh, to the conference room over there, and so, uh, you're welcome to stay in here if you like, as I said, I don't know how long the, uh, executive session will take, you may be here for a long time, um, and, and we don't always come out and, and take action, so, um, there you are. Uh, the time is seven oh three, and so we're going to, uh, adjourn from this session, and I expect that we'll be in executive session by seven fifteen. And then after that's over, we'll reconvene out here. Thanks, everyone, thank you for joining us. Time is now, uh, eight fifty-nine PM, uh, we adjourn from the executive session at eight fifty-six PM, and now we're gonna reconvene to regular session, and I believe there's, uh, you have one motion to be made.
I would like to make a motion that we waive the attorney client privilege, uh, to our attorney, so that she is able to speak and do the, and the CDC will-
All right, is there a second? We have a second, all in favor? All right, it is unanimous, um, and I believe that takes care of all of our business, uh, so the next item would be, uh, the journey. All in favor, I think we all voted already, okay, we're, we are adjourned, and the time is, uh, nine AM.